I'm Katherine Davis, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I'd like to welcome you all, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum: The Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss, face-to-face, issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, The Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit a question for future forums, visit our Facebook page, @LeagueOfWomenVotersRochester, for information and deadlines for submission. As there is never enough time to cover all issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not answered tonight. We'd like to thank all the candidates running for office for offering to serve their community and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as well as you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. So, welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for the Rochester Public School Board Seat 7. Candidates for the seat are Mark Schleusner and Jess Garcia. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. Then candidates will respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partner, and the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answers as succinct as possible. We would like to get to as many questions as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please do finish the sentence when your time is up. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper for tonight is LWV Rochester member Anna Sanchez. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brimajoin, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions will be Jordan Shear from The Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, candidate Garcia will begin their opening statement.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the forum. Also, those of you who are watching now at home and/or later tonight, or some other time. My name is Dr. Jess Garcia, and I am running for Rochester Public School Board because I have the personal experience and professional knowledge needed to get the district on track to achieving its goal of implementing effective and equitable change for our students. As a clinical psychologist, I've worked with diverse and underserved populations my entire training and career. Multiculturalism is my passion and my path. I've worked in a middle school juvenile court clinic in a summer camp with youth from all over the world who've lost family members.
I'm Catherine Davis, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I'd like to welcome you all, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, The Rochester Post Bulletin, The Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss, face-to-face, issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, The Post Bulletin, The Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit a question for future forum, visit our Facebook page, League of Women Voters Rochester, Minnesota, for information and deadlines for submission. As there is never enough time to cover all issues in a limited time and settings such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not answered tonight. We'd like to thank all the candidates running for office for offering to serve their community and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as well as you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. So, welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for the Rochester Public School Board, seat seven. Candidates for the seat are Mark Schlossner and Jess Garcia. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. Then candidates will respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening partner, and the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answers as succinct as possible. We would like to get to as many questions as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please do finish the sentence when your time is up. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper for tonight is LWV Rochester member Anna Sanchez. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brimijan, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy Smet, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions will be Jordan Sheer from The Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from The Chamber of Commerce. And with that, candidate Garcia will begin their opening statement.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the forum, also those of you who are watching now at home and/or later tonight, or some other time. My name is Dr. Jess Garcia, and I am running for Rochester Public School Board because I have the personal experience and professional knowledge needed to get the district on track to achieving its goal of implementing effective and equitable change for our students. As a clinical psychologist, I've worked with diverse and underserved populations my entire training and career. Multiculturalism is my passion and my path. I've worked in a middle school juvenile court clinic, in a summer camp with youth from all over the world who've lost family members to acts of terrorism. I'm currently working with civilly committed patients in a forensic mental health hospital. But before all that, I would have been labeled an at-risk youth. I'm an intersectional human. I'm no stranger to discrimination, oppression, and just generally not having access to all the things I needed to be a happy and healthy kid. So, when I came across articles about the district's racial disparities and their disciplinary practices towards students of color, it was clear to me that I needed to step in and help. It's who I am and what I do, personally and professionally. My platform is focused on mental health assessment and access to services, not just for students, but also for the larger community. It's strong in diversity, equity, and inclusivity, so we can build a multicultural and flourishing district. And it emphasizes physical and cyber safety throughout our buildings and certainly throughout distance learning. Our children in our community need help healing for so many different reasons right now. I would love to help us get there. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Garcia. Candidate Schlossner?
Hello. Hi, I'm Mark Schlossner. I'd like to also thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum this evening. I'm a product of Rochester Public Schools. I grew up here in Rochester. I went through Pinewood Willow and Mau High School. I have two daughters, one who is still currently in high school and one who has graduated from Mau High School. She's currently at college. I've served my country in the military. It was important to me to start serving my country and my community at an earlier age. After the military, I went to college at Wentz State, graduated with a degree in computer science theory and mathematics. I worked at IBM. I'm currently working at my clinic as a team lead for Medical Image Viewer. About 12 years ago, I started serving my community in a more leadership fashion. I've served on a number of youth organizations in their board of directors, because that's where I'm past my background and my skills are at. I've had a certification in organizational leadership. I spend a lot of time understanding complex systems. At the end of the day, the school board is absolutely a complex system. It's a lot of moving parts. On other boards, I've wrote policy. I've wrote understand finance at a great level. I currently serve as the treasurer for the second year as the school board here in Rochester Public Schools, where we do spend a lot of time beyond the budget looking at the numbers. So, at the end of the day, numbers are important. And if we want to be successful in bringing the programming that we need to our students of Rochester Public Schools, we need to be able to afford to do it, especially in these hard COVID times where the school district is taking a major financial hit, as all places of business and government are at this time. As far as other organizations that I've been involved with, the one I would like to highlight is actually the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, where I was the volunteer of the year in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Schlossner. This question actually starts with you. What's the responsibility of a school board member to the school district and to the community?
There's a number of areas where the school board member is responsible, from a school district and a community point of view. You know, the role of a school board member is threefold. We are responsible for approving a budget on an annual basis, which we go into that season here real soon. We are responsible for supervising the superintendent, which, as we know in the news, we just recently extended his contract one year. And we're also responsible for policy, which the superintendent is responsible for implementing the action of. From a community point of view, it is a school board's members' responsibility to listen to what the community has to say. What are the things going well? What are the things not going well? To get out, listen to what people have to say, and sometimes educate them on how the school district works. Again, it is a complex system, and there are a lot of things that we can and can't do. Sometimes there's things that are better suited on a legislative level or other levels of government. It's not the full control of the school district or the school board to do what we need to do within the schools.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
In addition to what Mark has shared, obviously, the superintendent, the budget, and policy, I think those are the things legislatively that we are responsible for, but to me, it's more than that. So, I think that where the community comes in is the school board is looking to us for leadership. And the community, as community leaders, we need to be doing that. And so, it's not just district. It's everything outside of the district as well. So, we need to promote those connections. We can't just keep thinking only of voters who are teachers or educators and with students and children in the district, even for those people who don't vote and don't have children. If we have a healthy school district, those things are going to impact everybody in that community. So, I think if we have a school board that can create a healthy district, the healthy district can create awesome and amazing community opportunities. So, the more innovation that we have in the school districts, the more those things, the more our culture is going to spill out into the larger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. The COVID-19 pandemic has caused significant pressure on many in our community, including working parents with school-aged kids. As children head back to school and prepare for remote learning this fall, what steps can be taken to help parents manage both work and their kids' remote learning schedules?
I'm sorry, candidate Garcia?
Sure. So, I think other community leaders, in addition to the school district, would be helpful. So, reaching out to Chamber of Commerce, reaching out to the mayor, because what we are going to need is we're going to need employers to be flexible with our parents. They're being put in kind of an impossible position. So, it's one thing for us to say, these are all of the ways that you have to be flexible with us within the district, but it's the employers that are going to need to be flexible for those parents who are working and have children doing distance learning. So, we need something from city government, but also inner-city government, because we're going to have people outside of Rochester proper who are coming into our district. Not everybody works in Rochester who has children going to school here as well. So, they need to be assured that if we're telling them, this is what you need to do to make sure that you are present and your child is present for school, and these are our expectations, is that we're also communicating that to employers, and the employers have the flexibility that they need to be able to support our parents and even our educators, who are also parents and educators, and trying to work with their students, their kids, who are also students at home.
Thank you. Candidate Schlossner?
I completely agree with everything Dr. Garcia had said, because it is really important that our businesses in our community does do what is possible to support the families that do have students at home. The one thing that I take a little bit different is I think this is the case all the time, not necessarily just now with COVID. I think this is an opportunity for our community and our education system to think differently about education. You know, if we had the support of businesses for, say, drop-in help centers, yes, that would absolutely help now from a COVID point of view, but that would help even when we were not in a COVID situation. Or if we think about, say, city government with, say, the need for affordable housing, if there was a desire in the community to have an area within, say, affordable housing that could also house educational facilities, yes, that would help outside of COVID as well. So, from a business point of view, I think there's a lot of things that we can do that are outside the box of thinking that could help a lot during COVID, but would help post-COVID and help our community grow as well.
Thank you. This next question will begin with candidate Schlossner. What metrics should be used to decide when to allow our public school children to return to school full-time?
Great question, and I will never pretend I am a public health policy expert. So, what metrics should be used? I would look to the guidance of MD. It's interesting, you know, it's very important for me to be aware of what is going on in our community, our state, our national level, and quite honestly, the world as it relates to COVID. And there's a lot of discussion around, well, what metrics should be used? You know, I think the reality is that we don't know. You know, we do have MD working with, MDH or the Minnesota Department of Education work with the Minnesota Department of Health, who does have the experts, and we should be going by their guidance as it relates to when schools should and should not be closed. But these are changing times, and I think they're doing their best to keep up with the changing times as well.
Great, thank you. Candidate Garcia?
Yeah, so, I mean, we were given a metric. So, we had been waiting, or the information, they waited so long to get the information out to the families, because we were waiting for the governor and for the Minnesota Department of Education to sort of launch this, this is what we're asking you to do. So, the metric itself is already in place. I think the thing that we, or the current school board superintendent ended up doing was leaning on the conservative side of that. So, a number of parents have already reached out saying, if by the metric that they have, we should have, we should all be one step further in. So, the secondary school, they should be in hybrid, and then the younger kids should be all in-person. And there wouldn't really be anybody distancing, why did we end up being more on the conservative end? So, I think that now that we played the more conservative card, the additional part of the metrics is sort of that clinical judgment of, okay, so now we were a little conservative. If there's not much of a change, especially in our county and particularly within our school district, then we should be moving towards, you know, a lesser conservative way of being educated. I think the issue would be if we tried to do that too soon and then had to pull back because we had a bunch of cases coming out in the school. But right now, I think the parents understand that there's a need for that flexibility.
Thank you. Rebuttal from candidate Schlossner?
Not really a rebuttal so much as I completely agree with everything Dr. Garcia said, but I think the thing that is important to keep in mind with these ever-changing, unprecedented times, is one of the things that students need is consistency. And we cannot be changing in-classroom hybrid, et cetera, on a regular basis, because that'd be very disruptive to the students at the end of the day. So, while we may have gone conservative throughout with the district, I do think we do need to be cautious when changing the educational model on the students.
Thank you. All right, this next question will come from The Post Bulletin, and candidate Garcia, you will begin.
Rochester Public Schools is facing a budget deficit in the coming years. As a school board member, what would be the best way to address that issue while also keeping the best interests of the students and families in mind?
So, I think, when I think about this question, and when you listen to the school board meetings, as I've been doing sort of, you know, for the majority of the year, if not attending in person before COVID, is that our finance people are actually pretty good at the budget piece. They've already made some gains in figuring out how to take those budget insecurities sort of head-on, so I'm certainly looking to them for that help and that guidance. When others come across our desk, as I'm sure that they will over the next year or two years, three years plus, however long COVID is going to impact us into the future, we triage that. And the way that I would triage those things is to make sure that people come first. So, I'm a fan of assessment and data, but I also have to work with people who are that data. And so, for me, the people that are going to be impacted by that, you know, as long as they're healthy, safe, and welcome, then I think that those things, that's what sort of would be my kind of budgetary priorities. But I think that we also have a number of things now that we're sort of playing with. You know, we added those SRO contracts, might that not be, have been the best use of our funds, Fidel, closing of Fidel, et cetera. So, I think we've already got some good gains in that respect.
Thank you. Candidate Schlossner?
Budgetary concerns are one of the things that the school district always has. One of the things that we know is when we look at where we get our money from, the bulk of it is from the Minnesota Department of Ed, and when legislation passes, a 2% funding increase when our expenses are going up 3.5% is not a good place for anybody to be in. So, one of the areas that we need to do is make sure we have a good relationship and make sure our legislation understands that we'd appreciate if they would fully fund special education and would actually look at what costs are going up when looking at how much they should fund us. If those two things would happen, we wouldn't be in the budgetary constraints that we are in, as well as, quite frankly, all the other school districts in the state of Minnesota. What we can do, or what is within our control, is looking at where we are spending the money, is it effectively being spent? One of the things I haven't seen as much as I'd like to see, and maybe it is happening because we do have a very, we do have a very well-skilled finance area, is looking at those operational efficiencies and seeing if the money is being spent on programs that are getting the results that we want, whatever the program is.
Thank you. What criteria should we be using when making decisions to close a school, for example, Fidel? And candidate Schlossner, you begin.
That is a million-dollar question that I wish I had an answer to. One of the things that we need to do, make sure that we need to do, is when we have to make a major decision like that, that involves the community, the families, the students, is soliciting and getting the input and involving the families, the staff, the community, and the students in that decision process. You know, while Fidel may have been closed from a budgetary inequality point of view, I would tend to agree that I don't think we received the input or the level of input that we needed. It was, I won't go into the details of why the timing was now, but it does relate to our new schools coming online and the need to have to rebalance the entire school district from a boundary point of view, and not knowing where those students are going to be does affect the capacities of the other schools. But for the decision process, we need to involve more people in the discussion, especially the families and the students that go to the school.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I'm actually going to add in some information, I think, to my previous, is that we do have a very complex budget equation that we use, and I think it would be useful, as Mark had mentioned earlier, is to make sure that we are working with the legislature. I think that some people, particularly if you're in certain fields of work, that politics feels scary, but everything is involved in politics. And so, if we look to the Minnesota Department of Education and have a good relationship with them, but can also advocate for the things that we need to make sure that we're fully funded, things like this won't necessarily have to happen often. But in terms of closing Fidel specifically, I think the way that you look at that is, you know, again, the data, but also the human element of the data. Is there a negative environmental impact? I know you do environmental impact reports, but is, are we wasting resources or maybe not using them as effectively as we could? And I know that Fidel was sort of packaged as a confusing thing, is it equity or is it budget? But I think both of those things are also important. So, I think there are a number of things that you would look at to determine the closing of a school. Fidel aside, I think that was kind of an awkward situation, but certainly there's a list of criteria that I would use personally.
Thank you. Should the district continue contracts with school resource officers? Why or why not? Candidate Garcia, you can begin.
Absolutely. I'm an easy no on that one. I do not think that we should continue on with, well, contracts aside, legally speaking, if you can get out of the contract or not renew a contract, I think that that would be beneficial. And I think the hiring on, especially while we knew we were going into distance learning and/or were out of school because of COVID, the optics of that just looked awful for us, especially because there were so many in the community at that time actively petitioning the school board to take away the school resource officers. And even though they're in the sort of older end of the district, so middle schools and high schools, for me and the work that I do, I'm on the confinement end of the school-to-prison pipeline. And so, for me, having a resource, or not a, yeah, a school resource officer in a school just provides an easement to my path, particularly for young men of color, especially if they have special education needs and they do not have the community supports they need to be successful in school. And there's also, if we want to do, you know, more person-centered, trauma-informed teaching and care, that doesn't offer that. So, I'm a definitive no on that one, and I can certainly speak out. I know a number of people probably have questions on that, so please reach out to the campaign later.
Thank you. Candidate Schlossner?
At this point in time, I'm undecided, quite frankly. I've been doing my research on other districts and what they have done. I do know we do have a school board study session coming up on this exact topic. I do invite the public to come, or at least I should say, listen in and watch that discussion to see the information that I'm going to be presented, to have to make a decision on this. Of course, the decision's kind of been made for the year. But going forward, from a budgetary point of view, if, say, the Rochester Police Department feels this important, quite frankly, I think they should foot the bill for it. They have more flexi, the city of Rochester has more flexible financing options in what they're allowed to do than a school district does, and it's a budgetary item where we could save money. What I have seen as a success in other districts is at least pairing SROs with social workers, you know, to help deescalate situations. I think that would be good. We did have a student survey that went out, and we did have some data come back that I'm sure will be presented in this study session, that it's maybe not as despair as we think it might be, because the voice of the students is extremely important in this space. I'd say more so than the I'd say more so than the staff.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce and candidate Schlesner, you will begin.
So Rochester was recently awarded a grant to be the first community in the state of Minnesota to build a PTEC school, Pathways in Technology Early College High School. How will you continue to support programs and initiatives such as PTEC geared towards preparing our students to be workforce-ready by the time they graduate?
This one, in my opinion, is great. This is where I've been focusing my time for the last 12 years from a community volunteer point of view, where I started with the Chamber of Commerce when they had a STEM committee focused on this space. One of the things I also currently do is I'm on the IT Curriculum Committee for the CTEC, which is really a precursor to PTEC. So it's great that the state of Minnesota has provided us some funding to more or less continue doing some great stuff that we were doing with our CTEC program. I will continue to serve on other boards that I'm involved with outside the public school board that is focused on youth and STEM, STEM being science, technology, engineering, math, to show especially the young girls that they're more than capable and able, as well as anybody else, to go in these technology fields. I spend a lot of my time outside of the school board in this space, focusing on that.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so I think the experiential model that something like PTEC offers is impressive, and I'm, I'm all for giving that a thumbs up in meetings, for sure. That's the easy part. I think I also want to just highlight that something like this, community, community schools like this offer a solution to socioeconomic disparities, essentially. So that we're providing skills in an emerging field and that we're allowing students who may not otherwise have access, resource options, to go to community or university-level college after high school, that this is a perfect example of how we can be more equitable within the district. So I think that while addressing disparities, all of this looks great in my books, so if they can continue to help the community and offer those opportunities, I think that would be great. I also think that if we, as Rochester, are looking to become a destination medical center to provide world-class healthcare, we should also be a school district that's providing world-class education. And so I think that this would be a great option because this is actually a, a global model. And so we can be adding this into something that makes our students here competitive all over the world, not just right here in Rochester.
Thank you. This next question will start with candidate Garcia. Later start, school start times have been shown to support improved mental health and school and test performance. Do you agree with this? And if so, how would you restructure secondary school schedules?
So I do agree, because I'm a mental health professional. And so I am aware of the developmental research around this. In terms of later school schedules for secondary, yes. So, so younger students actually having a little bit of an earlier day is, is better, but those, those high schoolers having something a little bit later in the day is great. For me in high school, I had to start, school started at 7:20, but I was in marching band, so I had to start like at 6 o'clock in the morning, which was awful. So I think for, yes, I would be in support of this and restructuring this schedule. I think what your, the question is actually getting at is when are we going to see that bell schedule thing resolve itself? Because there's been so many meetings on that. I would certainly support the later start times for the secondary school. And I know that people are kind of mincing a number of hours in the seat of a classroom, education hours, et cetera, et cetera. For me, it's about making sure that we, I know the money and the resources have to be there, but it's easier to just set, like, this start time would be effective, can we just move forward with this and figure out what we're going to need around that?
Great. Thank you. Candidate Schlesner.
This is where I would look to experts like Dr. Garcia, on her opinion. From everything I've read, yes, of course, absolutely. One of the things, you know, because we've had six different school board meetings where we've talked about this particular topic, and it's one of the things, I'd actually say myself, as well as the other school board members, we're pretty much in agreement that it does need to be later. And it is, my, or finding the, the right schedule that meets the budgetary needs, because in one of the meetings, we were presented, there were some great options, but it would cost us a million dollars and additional transportation to do it. Again, this is actually a great example of where we are in a complex system, and it's not just as easy as changing the start times. There are a lot of moving parts when you talk about changing start times. As far as the original question, yes, absolutely. I'm in favor of a later start time, and everything that I've read is it should be at least 8:30 or later. So we have had a couple of options at this last meeting where it was post 9 o'clock. Again, from, from what I've read and from my point of view, as long as it's post 8:30 for secondary education, that's good.
Thank you. Rebuttal by Dr. Garcia.
Yeah, so I just want to kind of follow up, and I understand that it's complex and there are a lot of moving parts. I think the frustrating thing for parents is that they need a decision to be made, period. And so I think that, similar with COVID, you're not going to please everybody, for sure. And so the need for a decision to be made to move forward against whatever that decision is, is helpful. Obviously, you need the data there to support that, you need the resources to support that. But be, if you have all of these moving parts in one place to be able to move forward and ask for that flexibility, I think that that's what, that's what people need now.
Great. Thank you. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin and candidate Schlesner, you will begin.
Rochester Public Schools is working on a three-year plan centered around equity. Beyond that, is there additional work that needs to be done at the school board level to facilitate that farther than what the plan outlines?
I would say yes, and, and, you know, the three-year plan is going to be interesting when we get to implementation, since it does come with the need for additional money. It does start with an administrative-level position. I think it, what, what is important is that the person in the position needs to have the authority to make happen, happen. And that will come with hiring a cabinet-level administrator to do that. Some of the additional things that I do think we need to do, and we've got a couple of policy board members that do a great job in this space, is developing and passing of equity policy as well, because, you know, again, that is what the school board is responsible for. Once we have policy, it's the superintendent's job to make sure it happens. You know, when we go through history and look at, say, OCR and the MDH report as well, while I feel, I mean, I do not know with certainty, but while I feel there is a desire to not necessarily continue reporting some of that stuff, I personally feel it is important that we continue to look at the numbers, continue to report what we have, and continue to do the analysis. On the equity programs that we have to see, are they actually getting the results that we want from them?
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so equity is not a movement, and so it absolutely is going to need to go past the three years. And cultural competence and proficiency is not a destination, it's something you're continuously working on. So even though there's a three-year plan to implement something, it's three years plus. And I think at the school board level, just at the very least, I'm a fan of just anybody in the world, but particularly for educators, doing some racial identity work, and also kind of looking at their own implicit biases, doing their own diversity, equity, inclusivity, sort of taking, taking an assessment of themselves. But beyond that, specific to the school board, is I think the school board should also, the director should also be doing that work, because I think good leaders would never expect somebody that they're trying to lead to do something that they wouldn't do for themselves. And so if, if we're expecting everybody in the district to be behaving more equitably, we should be holding ourselves to that and/or a higher standard.
Thank you. This next question will start with candidate Garcia. What do you think will be the most challenging aspect of being a member of a governance board?
That's a great question. I think the competing interests, because I'm already feeling that just as a first-time candidate, is that I'll have a teacher contact me, a parent contact me, student, current or former student contact me about the same issue and have very different needs that, that they would like to have met. And so for me, even though I can bring all of that information to a school board, sometimes knowing that I'm one of seven, it's not like I'm just going to be able to come in and say, this, this is what we need, and I have the expertise, and let's move forward with my version of the vote, even though I'm very egalitarian in the way that I work. I think that making sure that, or having to, to kind of recognize that I'm not going to be able to make everybody happy, even though I would like to believe that I could do that, would probably be the most difficult. But it's not something that, that can be overcome, because I think for me, when somebody doesn't get the thing that they want, if you can communicate clearly and still provide them support, I think that that's helpful, rather than just being dismissive, which I think sometimes a lot of the, the families and educators feel, is that when they request something of the school board, it falls upon deaf ears, and then, and then that's it. Whereas I would continue to follow up and provide supports.
Thank you. Candidate Schlesner.
Yeah, it is a great question, it is a difficult question as well, because you are one of seven, and we represent, you know, we're seven people who represent 18,500 students, 2,500 employees. And you're going to get 18,500 different opinions, 2,500 different opinions, and it is difficult. Even when the school district did a survey on what should we do from a COVID point of view, you know, the survey results pretty much kind of reflected what societal has as well, where it was not a clear choice on which way the district should go. And there are times that you do have to put your opinion aside for what is best for the district as presented from experts in those areas. You know, you do do your research, you do form an opinion, but you do come to the meetings with an open mind to listen with what is going to be presented to you. And you should at least have enough knowledge to question it, but not to the point where you get into micromanagement. That is not a school board member's job. We are, we're about policy, budget, supervision of the superintendent. And there will be times where you might need to maybe lightly tiptoe into the space of management. It shouldn't be rare, if ever.
Great. Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with candidate Schlesner. What policies would help to change the school-to-prison pipeline problem?
Specifically, if, honestly, I don't memorize all of our policies, but it, it kind of goes back to the previous question I had, or the previous answer that I had earlier, where we need to form policy. So it is my understanding, we don't have exact policy right now to prevent things like that. You know, it gets back to the equity discussion. You know, what are we doing from a policy point of view for the superintendent to implement that does prevent that? We do have work going on in that space, but is it in policy right now? No, no, it's not. Should it be? Yeah, it probably should be a policy point of view. If we, as a school board, are going to take it serious, we need to pass policy on that. So it's then not up to the superintendent or anyone else. If it's policy, it's policy, it needs to be implemented, and we should have more in that space.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
Thank you for the question. So I'm, like I said, I work on the confinement end of the school-to-prison pipeline. I've worked in state and federal correctional facilities, and I work for DHS now with people who are civilly committed. And so to me, I, I see data all the time, and it's almost routine. If I'm writing a psychological report on a young man of color who dropped out of school and while he was in school, received special education services, and came from a low-income household, the chances of him seeing me versus being a fully functioning, independent person in the community, reaching his own goals, is higher. And I'm tired of writing that report. So for me, equitable policy is period. We, what we need to do is we need to look at every single policy, all of our, you know, handbooks, what rules and expectations we're holding of staff and students, and to ask ourselves, who is benefiting from this and who is not benefiting from this? And are we specifically marginalizing a community? And I think assessment, adding a multidisciplinary screening and assessment of all of our students would help us understand where they all are. And if we need to provide a support, then we have the data to do that.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with candidate Garcia. Due to current events and historically a neglect of youth perspective in government, many youths are distrustful of elected leaders. How will you build trust in meaningful relationships with youth in Rochester?
So I'm already doing that. I'm a millennial, I'll just call myself out. So I'm part of the distrust of leaders too, which is partly why, not specific to Mark, but why I'm running for office. And so for me, the building trust really is to be accessible and to be a real human being and not just somebody who's reading from a prompter. So I was early on, actually endorsed by the Rochester Community Initiative, which is made up of a lot of current and former RPS students. And so they contact me all the time, and I have like a little fan club. So to me, if, as long as you allow for that communication and you let them know and you show them with your actions that the things they're asking for, that you're moving on that, even if you can't exactly give them what they're needing or wanting, they trust that you're going to move forward. And even just in my work, I never make promises because I can't necessarily guarantee that I will keep them, but I let people know that I will do the best that I can, and I keep them updated, and I'm very transparent. And so I think because I'm in that, I would say, the, the younger end of the, you know, political candidate age, I'm a little bit closer to that generation, and so there's a little bit of an, of an overlap. So we've got, we've got a good connection there.
Thank you. Candidate Schlesner.
Exactly like Dr. Garcia said, it's all about transparency and accessibility. And I, quite frankly, with what I've seen in the last three and a half years I've been on school board, I actually think it applies to more than just the students and the younger generation. I see that a lot with people of all ages having a distrust for elected officials. And it does get back to being transparent with the decision-making process. And when a decision goes in a direction that, say, a constituent isn't happy with, spending the time with them to help them understand the reason why you voted the way that you did, so they can, you know, they may not agree with you, but if you can help them see why you did what you did, that, that's helpful. And I think that's important for everybody at the end of the day.
Great. Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with candidate Schlesner. What can, what's one thing that can be done to support teachers and school staff?
Just one. Where to start? I think what's important is the, the staff needs to feel appreciated. You know, when there are hard times and people are working outside their comfort zone and doing things as best as they can, like our students, or I should say, our staff and our teachers especially are doing right now, of making sure that they know that they are appreciated, especially for working outside in these very unprecedented times and environments that they may not be comfortable from a multitude point of view. So one thing, appreciation, thanking them on a regular basis, and letting them know that their hard work is making a difference, even when they have their down days.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, if I have to choose just one, I think I would just say acknowledgement, like, acknowledge them, acknowledge their talents, and acknowledge the difficulty of their reality right now, because I think if they feel seen, then they at least know that you might be a, a resource or a support for them either right then or in the future. And I would say that for, for my patients, just me sitting and sort of recognizing kind of their darkness or whatever they're going through sometimes is enough to be healing, and they can kind of manage on their own, just providing kind of that home base, I think.
Great. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with candidate Garcia. Do you believe that classroom sizes are too large in some of our schools?
Yes, I do. I, I think one of the things that, and I know that this isn't the issue for everybody, but one of the things that people sort of covet about schools like Fidel was the smaller classroom model. And I know as a student who, for myself, I was in, in classes all the way through high school that were like 30-plus students. Sometimes you feel not heard or seen, and I was one of the louder students, so I can just imagine the students that don't say very much, how they might feel. And then going to a large state university, you could be in a, in a room with hundreds of students. So, yeah, I think the more individualized time, especially for younger students who developmentally require that kind of scaffolding, social interaction with teachers, and more specific kind of hands-on time, that is going to help them grow far more than just being kind of a face in the crowd. So, yeah, definitely too large. I'd love to see something a little bit bigger. I think our, our district is, is large, and that's maybe part of the problem. We need to kind of downsize a little bit.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Schlesner.
Yes, of course, but it's not as easy as just wishing to have smaller classroom sizes, because that is a multimillion-dollar solution. You know, one of my committee assignments is, I'm involved with the facilities design discussions that we've had going on for a number of years at this point. And when we looked at, say, classroom sizes for the new schools, once the schools are built, it gets into operational costs. Can, can we afford this? And where a lot of folks in our community feel, like, say, the 720-student-capacity schools that we're building for elementary schools are large schools, when you look at actually elementary schools, they're not large schools. You go to the Twin Cities, and they're building over 1,000-student-capacity elementary schools. schools. So our large schools are more medium-sized and while they may not be as optimal from an educational point of view, they're as close as we can get to be optimal from an operational efficiency point of view. So we do have to be able to pay for everything that's on our books. So would I like smaller classroom sizes? Yes, right after the school district continuously wins Powerball numbers.
All right, thank you. Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce and Candidate Schlesner, you will begin.
So the Incubator E D U program represents an innovative public-private partnership to help high schoolers realize their entrepreneurial ideas. How should RPS continue to support these programs and others that connect students to businesspeople and mentors?
That is a great program, and if you've not stopped, well, this year if you have not stopped by there, but if you hadn't before the fun of COVID began, it is a great place to stop by and to see the cool things that are going on there. How should we continue to support things like that? Working with folks like the Chamber of Commerce in other businesses within the Rochester area that wants to do something cool and innovative. The cool thing about Incubator C D U is, you know, it's about that entrepreneurial spirit of what can you do with an idea? You take an idea, you prototype it, you throw together a pitch, you practice presenting it to some potential funders, right? That's kind of the cool stuff. What we have going on also in Discovery Square is that's the real day version of the Incubator E D U for students, right? That's what goes on there. And that's part of what D M C is about, is partnering with folks like the Mayo Clinic and hopefully other technology places in the city as well. It does start with Incubator E D U for the students. Yeah, it's just great stuff.
All right, thank you. Candidate Garcia.
So to support, I mean, I think just voting aye in a school board meeting, when they're asking questions about whether we want to move to action on something like that is the easy thing to do. I also think that the continuous assessment of programs like that, making sure that the partnership stays lively and valid, I think is also important. And also for us, because, and I'll throw myself in there too, is that the older you get, the farther away I think sometimes you get from the pulse of things like now the gig economy or whatever it is that's happening, you know, in emerging fields or in older fields, but maybe newer type jobs. And I think that if we have people from the community or Chamber of Commerce who are kind of feeding that and sort of consulting with us, it's going to be easier for us to support things like Incubator E D U, P-Tech, and to continue to develop, you know, schools and programs and partnerships just like that. I think that that would be beneficial to us.
Thank you. This next question is going to come from the Post Bulletin and Candidate Garcia, you will begin.
Much of what local school boards do is dictated by the Minnesota Department of Education. So as a school board member, what, how active a role should the local school board have in regard to its relationship with the State Department, Department of Education?
I actually started to answer this earlier, I think. So if, I think an active relationship and partnership is a must, and I think that it's one thing to sort of look to them for guidance for things like how to go back to school, you know, during a pandemic. But also, we need to be able to lobby for ourselves and we need to be active. So we're not just taking guidance from them, but we are actively advocating for ourselves and letting them know, this is what we need from you. Because I think that we are big enough that we can hold a lot of pull and we could have, you know, we could have a bigger voice in the legislature for sure and also with M D E. And so if we have those relationships and they're ongoing, it's easier for them to recognize us as a continuous partner and for them to continue to sort of take stock from us rather than just seeing us a number in a crowd like RPS five through five. You know, we're human beings to them. And so I think that the more we can sort of mobilize our nurses and our teachers and, you know, whatever other union workers we have in the schools, even the school board to step up and be active advocates, we're going to get so much further in things like fully funding our education here in Minnesota and in Rochester.
Thank you. Candidates Schlesner.
Completely agree with Doctor Garcia. What's important is the relationships with the legislators, you know, because in a certain sense, you know, M D E is the superintendent on a state level. When the legislature passes policy and passes funding, M D needs to implement or pass the money on. They're a larger form of us. One of the things that we are fortunate to have in our community is when you look at the Minnesota Senate, the education policy chair is a legislator in our community. So having those relationships is exceedingly important. One of the other nonprofits I'm involved with, I've helped write legislation to get funding for that organization. It's not just writing something, it's having that relationship with the legislators to get their support for the funding that is needed. Exceedingly important at the end of the day. That's how things happen, is the relationships. One of the things that the school board currently doesn't have is a legislative committee that one of our other school members wants to start, and I fully agree that we should have a legislative committee as part of our school board committee assignments to start building those relationships and bring forward to the state what's important to our community.
Great, thank you. And this will be our last question, and it will begin with you, Candidate Schlesner. How will you increase the academic success and graduation rate of all of our students?
That's probably one of the hardest questions we've had tonight because there's a lot of things that need to be done in that space. One of the things that we are doing is the school district has revisited how we're going to be grading. It's called Grading for Learning. That should be rolled out here real soon, that should help in, my take on it is kind of removing some of the stresses behind the academic environment. You know, when I look at myself, for example, I was always one of these poor test takers and I had a lot of anxiety around tests where if I was a student in Rochester Public during this Grading for Learning, it would have helped me a lot. And one of my daughters is in the same situation. So I think that program would help. But what's going to be important for all of our students is taking a data analysis look at where we are from, say, an equity deliverable point of view. If we truly want to do what's important for all of our students, you know, not just some of them, but all of our students, we do have to look at where we are in the equity space and a lot of the other questions that we've touched on tonight because they all factor into how are we going to make all of our students successful? And, you know, lastly, again, I just put this in there where, again, it gets into operational efficiencies to have the money for the programs that are important.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
So educational equity is necessary because it will support all of our students, which is the question. The start, I think, also, in addition to that, is to think of our students not just in terms of their academic success. They are human beings, not just producing, you know, raw data to us and us making decisions for them based solely on that. So we need to look at them and their intersectionality. Some people are more, in a more complex way, marginalized than some of our other students, like not all inequity is created equal. And I'm a fan of multidisciplinary assessment and screenings for our students before and often during their educational trajectory. So if we know we have students who aren't getting the supports that they need, then perhaps having some, you know, if they have some mental health needs or other things are prominent and overlapping, we can respond to that. And if they're happy and healthy and whole and their mental health is great, the academic stuff is going to come naturally. So if we have unhealthy students, you know, how they're doing academically isn't necessarily going to mean much. So we need to make sure that they are okay as a whole, and as much as we can do that as a district, we should be doing that for all of them.
Great, thank you. That concludes the question portion of our forum. We will now hear closing statements from each candidate. Candidates, you will have two minutes to speak. And Candidates Schlesner, you will begin.
I want to start with, again, thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. It is important for our community to hear what us candidates have to say, what we feel is important, and where we compare and contrast one another. Also, I want to thank Doctor Garcia as well. Win or lose, I think either of us will make outstanding school board members, which is a good place for our community to be. I believe all students do deserve quality education, and that does come with looking at how efficient our programs are. Are they being effective in what we want them to do? And understanding the data as it goes. You know, one of the areas the school district needs is a better understanding of what it is doing. It's one of the things I've been saying for years and I will continue to say it, that it does matter that we understand what we're doing effectively. I believe our community communication needs to be better. Over the last three and a half years, we, as a school district, do a okay job in getting communication out. One of the things that I think we could do better is this. It will help build trust with more transparency in the decision-making process. We do have some good communication channels, but I think we need to help our community understand what our communication channels are so they can understand why our decisions are what they are and what is going on. I will continue to work towards more community collaboration. One of the things I starting to feel about is working better with our city government and our county government. There are things that we could be doing better as local governments that would be beneficial to our community as far as tax efficiencies go. And I do bring a lot of local leadership experience. For a number of years, I've been working in these roles to help better our youth in a number of ways. With that, I bring a skill set of analytics that is important to our complex system, and thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia.
Yes, I would also like to thank Mark for being here, and I completely agree. You know, whichever one of us moves forward, we're definitely here for the students, we're here for the educators, we're here for our staff, and we're here for the larger community. And that's truly an honor. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce, Post Bulletin for being here, also for all the listeners. Again, please, if you have any questions, reach out to me. I am fairly accessible, maybe not so much during the workday, but I will get back to you. You can visit me on my website. I have social media. I know we're not supposed to have our own campaign swag, so maybe go to the League of Women Voters site because my link is there if I'm not allowed to say that. My platform is heavy on mental health, not just for the school district, but for the larger community, because I think if we can manage that, you know, I'll let Mayo and Olmsted County manage our physical health, we're going to be in really good shape. The equity, diversity, and inclusivity piece, I think we are an incredibly diverse community. It doesn't necessarily mean that everybody feels welcome, and I would like to change that. And I think that if we have a true commitment to the equity work in the school, that's going to spill out into our community as well. I didn't get to speak as much about the physical and cyber safety, but they're certainly important, especially now with a lot of our students' distance learning and they're sort of out of our physical reach and we can't, you know, necessarily protect them from everything if we don't necessarily have actual physical eyes on them. But that's something you can check on my website as well. It's certainly important. I am ready to do the work. I go to very dark places sometimes and do very heavy lifting with people, and I'm ready to bring that expertise to the Rochester Public School District and beyond. So thank you for having us tonight, and I look forward to interacting with you all in the future.
All right, thank you. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in tonight's forum were those of the candidates, not those of L W V Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. And thank you to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce and the Rochester Post Bulletin, as well as the Rochester Public Library. Remember, Election Day is November third and that early voting starts September 18th. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit MNvotes.org for more information on the process. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place or would like to see your sample ballot, visit votenot411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums on the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everyone.